It's April thirtieth, twenty twenty four at six thirty. We are at the senior center, will call commons. I will start with a call to order.
President Ellen Mar.
Chris Plex here.
Paul Grady, present.
Jean Haley Dipple, present. All right, the first item is executive session under exemption three. This is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation of the public body, and the chair so declares. Here's the chair so declares where the board will discuss discuss legal options relating to the asset harbor disputes. Would anyone like to make a motion to go into executive session under that exemption three in reason?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, because this is executive session, we'll do real poll vote starting with you, Ms. Mar.
Hi, Ellen Mar.
Chris Plex, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, aye. All right, we will go in and come out at seven. Thank you.
Nope. All right. We'll go to license, premises and hearings. The first is a public hearing. Relaying the Gulf Tavern 3 CJ's Highway for change of license classification from wine and malt beverages to all alcohol beverages. Tracy, I believe you have an update there for us. Is the applicant online or?
The applicant is not quite up for being here tonight.
Okay.
But they were agreement fully returning that we can postpone until May 21st.
Okay, so I'll open this and then we'll move to continue to make 21st. All right. So the town has its select board public hearing notice. The Cohasset Select Board acting as the local licensing authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 30th, 2024 at 7:10. And 91 Sawyer Street, local comments Cohasset mass to consider the application of. Vidham LLC doing business as Gulf Tavern for change of license classification from wine and malt beverages to all alcoholic. Beverage license under Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12. The public is invited to offer input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing, don't be mailing select for comments at cohassetmaz.org. Or in person at the hearing. The public can also attend via the Zoom platform. Details for access to the Zoom platform for the hearing will be posted on the select board agenda when posted. The agenda will be available online at www.cohassetmaz.org in the medium slash hearing notices of the calendar section located on the bottom of the front page of the website. Full application is available in the select board. All right. So the hearing is now open. Would anyone like to move to continue this to May 21st?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Um, we appreciate the applicant continuing this so we can focus on the warrant. All those in favor, please vote up.
I agree.
Okay, let me continue that. Um, the next item is the Cohasset Farmers Market. This is for an event permit on Thursdays from two to six, from June 6th through October 10th in an entertainment permit. For that same time period. Starting with the event permit, are there any questions? Um, well, actually, is there anyone here?
Eleanor Barrett and Chief Quigley are promoted.
Okay. The chief Quigley, is there anything for? Okay. The chief quickly, is there anything or Eleanor, is there anything you would like to?
Hi, Wood. No, it's pretty, pretty standard application. Mark's the beginning of the summer, really. No, I'll defer to Eleanor, but we do have a safety plan in place and. I've been through it with with the Hueys and looks like we're in good shape.
We're ready for our twentieth year.
Hi. They agree. Are there any questions the board has of the chief or Eleanor?
I would make emotional approval. Second.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right. Successfully passed. Good luck with the farmers market. All right. Thank you. So at seven ten, we're gonna, gotta keep going. Yes.
So you're approving the event application and the entertainment license. That one was possible. I'll make sure of that. Right. Yes. Yes.
All right. Select for goals, town hall update. Is that something we want to continue to as we go through the warrant articles? Does that make more sense?
I think so.
Okay. Recreation project updates. So we had a great meeting with activity to us last week.
They're ready to send out all of the bid dogs next week. It's all going to be posted. All the projects are scheduled for groundbreaking the first week in July. So we're moving right now. Yeah, the completion date for most of the projects. The task force, the completion date is mid October. Completion for the. Beachwood Playground is September and the Sawyer Street is still on track for probably October time.
I could ask Michelle one question. The last time we spoke, you were optimistic that we would be able to include pickleball courts with the tennis courts. A few people have asked me about that. Do you still think that's a possibility?
I do. So the way the bid's going to be sent out is we're going to have alternates in the bid. So we're going to have a base bid. We're going to ask for. Concrete courts and then we're going to ask as a second alternate for the pickleball courts. So we make sure we get the the best product first and then if we can add those triple ball courts with the remaining.
Any further questions?
We have extra room with the rest. Fantastic.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Let's keep through those continual complaints. All right, let's turn to the warrant now. Next up on the agenda, we're a little bit ahead, seven thirty five, but you see folks in the audience. Why don't we, unless anyone objects, I'd like to skip ahead to the citizens petition as it relates to the plastic water bottle, water bottle ban. Because I know you have some scheduling considerations. Mr. Norman, you want to come up?
Yes. Thank you. So I filed a petition to ban a commercial sale of single use plastic water bottles under one gallon size. We gathered over three hundred signatures among town residents, which we submitted and certified only ten were certified for the purpose of the one article. But I'm here basically answering questions you might have. People said it's broad support. It will essentially reduce plastic waste in town. We have plenty of access to clean water. Our town water is very clean. It's tested. It meets all stringent state and federal regulations. So we want to encourage people to use reusable plastic water, reusable. Bottles and containers rather than dispose of single use plastic fish. That's a very low rate of recycle and. I should also point out that I'm chair of the co-chair of the class opening based in recreation committee and we sponsored the. Town earthquake cleanup, which was held on Saturday. We collected almost fifteen hundred pounds trash by events and we collected more than ten thousand pounds since we started the event in two thousand nineteen. A lot of that waste is plastic, as you can remember. We found a number of single use plastic water bottles around. At beaches, woods, other roads. I think this is filed a long way, you know, these plastic ways.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Norman?
Yeah, how many did I bet this the last time? You know, I'm not. You know, how many plastic soda balls? I just, I'm still puzzled to this day is to why we want to stop water bottles instead of maybe soda.
Yeah.
Juice, people stop by or someone stop by the gas station grabs a bottle of water and.
Yeah, there aren't as many alternatives to other beverages readily available. We can't circumvent so that you can. I think it would be more difficult to get broad public support for a ban on plastics, also new classified, like NIPS is another thing that many towns in. South Shore and Cape Cod have banned. I would love to see that happen as well. It's just, we're starting out to focusing on bottles just because. Clean water is so readily available. It's practically free. You can get it from the tap. So this, this readily, readily availability of substitutes is really the main reason for focusing waters.
Yeah, I understand other times we cancel it and. Tracking this because it hasn't worked that well. Again, I'm going to bounce back to where I'm taking, you know, just on if I'm stopping at the store, I want to grab a big bottle of water. I miss if I forgot to bring my cup or whatever I take in the corner. Instead, you know, well, I'm going to have to give you an orangeade. Well, because I, they don't have water anymore.
Well, they will have water. So all the towns that have passed the bans are still selling single use water bottles. It's just in different container. It's in aluminum cans. So aluminum can is much more likely to be recycled. I just went to Hingham. Last week, they passed the same bylaw beginning this year and every store can pass aluminum cans for sale. It really just nominal additional cost to a plastic water bottle. And so it's much less likely to be disposed of. They have deposits on them. So it encourages people to recycle them. But still, we really want to push people to just fill a bottle that can be used essentially in perpetuity.
Again, that's telling them what to do. And and the direction. So this is again, I'll say if I stand alone or stand for the story, I disagree with the straw. All right. We're pushing people and telling them we want them to and forcing them to make a choice. Whereas, you know, and you're dealing and you're doing away with property one value of these H two O water instead, but we're pushing it towards. Again, plastic bottles, soda. You can stop at this gas station on Sawyer Street, the mobile station is loaded up. I'll do is the diet coke, Pepsi's, the orangeades.
All due respect, Paul, I don't think that someone who has intention of drinking water, someone who's who's need in need of water to hydrate themselves is going to drink the mom do as a substitute. A substitute is a is a water in different container. So I, if I was wanting to buy water and there's no plastic water available, but aluminum can. Contain water wasn't always, I think you just purchase that.
Which still needs to be disposed of.
Yes, with a high, much higher rate of recyclability and plastic. Well, plastics, only nine percent of plastics are actually recycled where it's aluminum cans, not the exact way, but. You know, with the deposits, it's encouraging people to recycle. And I don't think recycling is the answer, really. It's, it's nice that a bottle could be recycled, repurposed to another bottle, but. Something like this, where it just gets filled up thousands of times, it's going to reduce waste altogether.
I just think that I said, you're taking the trays out of someone's hands. It's, it's not, it's not, again. Grab something you gotta grab. We're back to where we're getting, I'll do, where we're getting. Plastic walls about to do ginger ale, pepper.
Yeah, I just think.
And that's, that's my theory with it. I mean.
Yeah, I think it would be much more difficult to get broad support or something like that, just given that there are. Substances readily available.
You can keep so.
You know, I think Paul has a, has a point. There comes a, there comes a point in governance where coercing. People and telling them what to do, you kind of the minutia. And I don't really think that. That we should be in the business of telling people they can't have a plastic water bottle. And the argument. That it's easier to force people with. With water as opposed to Mountain Dew is just saying you're just looking, you're admitting that you really want to. Micromanage people's behavior and, and I just think there's a limit to what we need to do. And I don't see that there's a compelling thing that this. Alleged crisis of plastic all over the place is as acute. And I haven't seen the. A compelling argument that that it really does need to be. Removed. And if it did, if it was compelling, if it was a public help, then certainly. The same R even would say we have to ban all classes and not just, you know, Mountain Dew or whatever. We. Ban all kinds of products. So there's, there's a point where. You, you go beyond what's necessary. And also, I spent a number of years as. Chair of the Conservation Commission. And we did a very, very good job, but we recognized. That if you want to be effective, you pick your battles at what's really important. You don't grab at everything that's happens to be trendy or whatever. You. Use your government enforcement power judiciously and only for the major things. So. I really would be opposed to this.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I think we last saw you on July twenty fifth and in the summer and I have concerns and reservations about the petition, not about the concept. I think. Anything we can all do to conserve and reuse. Is in everybody's best interest. And I guess I'm, I'm a bit disappointed in that since the time you came before us before until now. There's been no public outreach. There's been no education on like, you know, encouraging people to consciously make the decision without it having it been banned. To conserve and not use water bottles. And, you know, maybe go to the sports clubs and say, hey, if you, you know, we can do a fundraiser where you can sell reusable bottles so that, you know, can. Reduce the amount of single use plastic bottles, because if I were very passionate about something, I wouldn't wait from July until. First of May to come back. I would have been proactive about it. I commend you and applaud you for the Earth Day cleanup, but I would have done something if I really was that passionate about it. There is, there are two towns on Marcus Vineyard that banned all plastic water bottles. And so they have found alternative, all plastic bottles, excuse me. They found alternatives for the sodas and the gatorades and all that in cartons and cans. And I think probably, you know, if you think that Martha's Vineyard, they, they have to. Offshore their waste. They have to barge it out. So it probably made a lot of sense for them to do that. But. Out of all the cities and towns, there's less than ten percent of municipality have, have passed such a ban. And I have to ask why, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think it takes time. I think a mindset change is necessary. I don't think it's going to happen all at once, but we're trend, definitely trending in the right direction. As I said, Hingham passed a similar ban. The start of this year, situating is in the process of having similar bylaws to the one that we're hopefully going to pass the town meeting in June third. And I think other towns will follow suit. I mean, I hope that Cohasset will want to be a leader in this regard, considering the natural beauty that we want to preserve, being a coastal town, seeing all the plastic waste as it washes up on our shores. So. I think coastal towns are more, it hits really, it really hits home. As you see it right in the backyard.
So is there, is there any data to support the? Lack of selling? Because it's not, it's, we're not banning the use of or banning the sales of. Is there any data from any of these towns? I think Concord was the first town ten years ago to put the ban in. Is there any data that shows? Like how much less plastic waste that they have?
I don't have licensing data. I don't think I've exactly.
Okay. Okay. Cause in our town report last year, the DPW reported that they recycled one hundred and ten tons of plastic. So I'm just curious. In terms of how much. This ban would alleviate that ten percent, twenty percent, which on a hundred and ten tons is, is pretty significant. I do have a question on the second paragraph of the petition. It says, commercial sale or distribution of water in single use bottles. Distribution. Can you define what you mean by that? Sorry, the second paragraph, proposed articles, where it says proposed article.
Well, I mean, it's really just a sale. So.
Okay. Cause distribution to me could mean I could go up to a soccer game with a case of thirty six bottles of water and distribute them. Is that, is that banned?
No, that would, okay. Just a sale. So the other thing I just want to highlight is this, it's not just about environmental concerns. It's also health concern. So. I'm sure you've heard that plastic water bottles have been shown to contain microplastics. Plastic water bottles are not tested like municipal water is. So they may contain PFAS, which our town tests for regularly and it's shown that our levels are well below. The stringent limits for the national EPA. So we don't know what's really in a plastic water bottle. It's not regularly tested. So. But we do know that they contain microplastics.
Just on.
Hold on, hold on, we've got, we've got three people online. Chris, you've been waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't.
So first, I just wanted to clarify, the vote that we're looking at tonight is really just on the issue of whether or not this should be on the warrant for town meeting.
It's on. It's a recommendation.
So what we're talking about tonight is whether or not the select words going to recommend.
Yes.
The article. And out of how many signatures did you get on your petition?
Three hundred, three hundred.
So I, I think that's a pretty clear statement from folks here in Cohasset that this is something that. Could get a lot of support. It could get a lot of support in town meeting. I would want to be in favor of it. I think it's a good idea. I don't think it's coercive or taking options away from people who. When they stop at a gas station, want a water because those options are there. One of those options is even a product of Cohasset. The everyone water and everybody laws. Is something that was an idea that came from Cohasset and founded by Cohasset residents. So. I think this is something that could work for Cohasset. I'm especially interested in the issue of PFAS. There was a recent EPA ruling that we have to. Put tighter restrictions on PFAS that's in the water. That's something that Cohasset will have to reckon with in the future. So. I think it's an important step towards taking care of the plastic problem. It's not a perfect step, but it's a good, important, worst of stuff.
All in check.
All right. Again, get rid of small plastic bottles instead of yourself. They deliver water every day. Large plastic bottles, they deliver gallon bottles. The three gallon bottles that go on a.
Five gallons. I've never seen one of those wash up in the G. It was very likely to turn to stop and show up recycled, reused.
But I've seen soda bottles.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no.
I'm concerned with the town that are doing away with it. And I'll do my research and find what was caught and pulling it off.
Eastside Dennis, a period of time. You send it to the mass.
Ken, I think it's a lot of. I think it's not a promising thing. I think, I think that the people's decision that's one. We do have the plastic bottles and the new bottles and that comes in gallon model. Still selling plastic in all the stores.
Yeah, we drink a lot of water for health reasons. We recycle it all. That's just part of the way we do that. However. One of the things that you may not be aware of is that hydration is a very serious health problem, especially for people who get older. You can have improper hydration and you don't really realize it and. It's, it's pretty insidious. So anything that promotes an easily distributable and portable source of pure drinking water, I think is. Has some public health. Advantages. And there's also situations where people need to take water portably and they don't. They either they can't carry a recycled bottle back and forth. And, and this could be a very big problem. Think of. People, construction workers going from place to place. The reason why. Bottles are popular is because they fill real need. And it isn't just a, I want to have a, a cool. Containers because hydration is important and anything that brings and eases the availability of. Good water for hydration, I think. Is, is positive. And I think the reason there's so many plastic water bottles is because. That does that. So I am perfectly content. I am perfectly content to um bring this to the citizens to vote. But I think it's a very bad idea and I certainly will vote against it, although this is generally my uh position.
But Jack, is there a particular advantage of plastic water bottles versus a cardboard container or aluminum can?
Well, plastic has clearly been more popular. Otherwise, it wouldn't be.
It is it is more popular. That's the problem. Well, I think it's a it's a perfect substitute to have a water bottle in a aluminum can or a cardboard box that's not plastic. Perfect substitute.
So you say, but. One of the things we like to do and discuss things is don't interrupt people. I'm just saying that it hasn't, the reason it is so popular is is because it has a use for a lot of people. And. I think we should. I'm opposed to it. You have a different, you know, position. I have no problem. Bringing it to the uh population to vote on it. I do not think that we should advocate it as a public policy. And the select board, I think we should let the people decide. And sometimes I think in that position. And it has not necessarily been popular, but there's times when this is has a lot of. Public impact. And three hundred people is a lot of people for a petition. But there are eight thousand people in town. So all I'm saying, you're welcome to make your argument, but I think. That as the leading board of the of the town, the select board should say, let's turn it over to the people to make their decision.
So, Mr. Norman, thank you for bringing this forward. Um I agree with you and I'm gonna vote for it. I believe that it's hard to get out of our own habits to do better environmental protection. But we have to start, as someone who's done Earth Day multiple years in a row. You see how many water bottles are hidden throughout our woods, our rivers, water bottles in particular. I also do a lot. Um sorting of cans at the the dump um for the Boy Scouts. And there's a huge amount of. Water bottles that get mixed in, but there's a huge amount of people who recycle um in in part because. The Boy Scouts have a great program and people are well trained to recycle. And I do think that. Our Cohasset residents would probably end up, you know, going for the cans and recycling them and. And that money all goes back um to the Scouts, which is great. Um. But I think more importantly, the environmental issues. And I appreciate too, maybe Ellen's goes to your front line, but you have been working with. The town staff to introduce water filtration systems to our public areas. Um to provide more and better options for everyone. I don't disagree with my fellow board members that water bottles are more convenient. Um but at the same time, I think it's gonna take some um new habits for us to start. Being more serious about environmental protection. Um so for that reason, I certainly support this. So at this point, it's clear we have a divided board. Um has advisory voted on this yet? Okay, um I mean typically we wait for advisory to vote first before we do a warrant recommendation. Although this might be a little bit unique because. Let's face it, is anything that advisory says is gonna change any of our votes? No offense to advisory, because this is sort of a public policy personal issue. And Jack, would you change your vote based on anything you hear from advisory, based on your strongly?
Well, I think any of us who were to say that we would not, that would without hearing what they say and why. To um before we hear it, to say what they say won't change our votes.
So it sounds like your favorite way to meet. There were no more in favor of voting?
I I would be surprised if advisory would come up with something new, but I'm happy to hear what they have to say.
We can wait. I just kind of be efficient and actually provide advisory with sort of the reverse situation, some of our input, because I do think it's gonna. Be interesting to see how all the votes go. So. We will vote either Tuesday or, excuse me, Thursday or Monday, because of warm coastal Monday, so we have to vote then.
Thank you. Ben, I do have actually a question for Mr. Senior on on this topic. So. In the enforcement section of the citizens petition, it's the Health Department. Well, we actually have a Board of Health, not a Health Department, correct?
We have a Health Department and we have a Board of Health.
Okay, so i- is this the right department to be the enforcement agency?
Um well, they regulate common picture licenses, picture licenses. Uh I mean, I the sale, this board issue, they they've regularly been sale of a lot of food items. Since most of these things are affiliated with some kind of retail sale, the Board of Health is probably the best. And they're in the field too. Otherwise, it's my office, the police department, which are not related enough.
Yeah, I I I wasn't sure on that. And and thank you for bringing up the filtration stations. I mean, I know they're popping up. We. We started them in the school years ago and have we mapped out, like, they're about five, six thousand bucks a piece?
Installed there about eight thousand.
Installed there about eight thousand. So has any fundraising been done?
Yes, the Preservation Committee approved funding for a hydration station at Barnes Complex. Um so that's going to be. Going as soon as the approval at town meeting is placed.
Okay, who pays for the water? That comes out of them?
I I assume that classic youth and baseball would pay for. Yeah, but I've also been, I'm sorry, I've been in touch with the Water Department and they are supportive and would uh look to potentially provide some free water. Um or hydration station funding if necessary. So we haven't gone too far down that road, but that's a potential. Also looking to raise funds through grants to get additional hydration stations. I know the ones going in as part of the uh. The new tennis courts, so there can be three women there.
Which is town property, so the town would pay for the water. So any town only in the town would pay. And so a place like Sandy Beach, it's in the parking lot, we pay. It's if it's on the the. What do they call it? Not the snack shack, but the, you know, whatever. The bathhouse. It's it's gonna be um they they would pay. Does the C Y B S A know that they will be?
Yeah, I spoke with them. They're very supportive. I talked to them before I got funding approval for the station.
So I remember you were up before C P C and I'm fully in favor of hydration stations. Matter of fact, I voted for it. So I think, you know, our company is that, you know, if people use those hydration stations responsibly. That decreases your quote-unquote water bottle. What I'm not in favor is taking the choice out of people's hands. Uh again, I'll mention people having this shop might need emergency hydration. You know, and sure, some breath or whatever. So that's where I go with it. Again, I'm I'm. Fully in favor of the town supplying hydration stations beyond the beach that reduces waste. Fields, Barnes Field we spoke about. And so what I'm against is taking the choice out of people's hands if someone needs something in a short period of time. And maybe education on acting responsibly.
One thing was, I want to say, Alana did speak at Camp Fire at the Board of Health and she's supportive of the byline also. I didn't see any issues with enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. We appreciate it and we will be voting you Thursday or Monday. All right.
Okay.
So draft warrants. Um now we are on. Chris, do we have anything that advisory started for capital and advisory that's?
The recommendation is to um put money into the OPEC trust that Historically has been a found that needs the policy. Fifty thousand dollar funding. This is, I I I think I'm talking about the subsidy, two hundred thousand dollars of free cash, maybe not very much. And capital is the one million nine nine six plus a five percent supply, a hundred thousand dollars of tuition. This is also free of all. Those are the two deposits come through the stabilization funds.
Okay, do you have any questions?
And then advisory voted this, relax.
And so, so there seemed to be some confusion the other night on capital. Michelle, I know, I know you were there. So. What the beginning balance was, what the five hundred thousand dollars um. That was voted in at special town meeting, what this year's deposit is. What what do and so what do we get to? Do you do you, I felt very confused by that conversation. I don't think they really knew. So.
My belief is there was nine hundred seven one thousand dollars in their stabilization fund. We added the five hundred thousand dollars and. So that brought them to one point four million dollars. With the additional money being put in at annual town meeting. That'll bring it up to the one five or whatever maybe.
Well, actually, we we kind of, we haven't been, we didn't use the stabilization fund last year. We just used the money we'd. Technically depositing to what we just tracked a little bit differently. That's the base number. Is that, well, is it, it's two million dollars, right? Two million sixty-six thousand dollars. That pays for some debt that's already existing and it also pays for all the projects. That's the number, that's the, yes, the deposits going in in this in the cycle. Whether they, whether they tap some of the one point four million, it's actually, it's it's city stabilization fund right now is a different conversation. Obviously. The money's there um and it can be used, but that's, this sounds like two triceal button, but it's already there. So it's actually three point four million dollars.
I I don't, I don't think that's clear. Or I don't think that was clear the other night.
So there's a total of.
There'll be a total of three point four million dollars plus actually a little bit extra money.
But then they're gonna draw it down based on capital allocations out of the same.
Right, I think they were trying to figure out how to. Because they they were parsing numbers pretty intensely. And so I just think that they thought they were working with a. Two million, less five hundred for debt service.
That's correct.
Which would get them to a million five.
That's correct. That's the number they're working with. And then there was the stabilization fund. That has the additional one point four million dollars that they can pull from if needed. Okay, so.
Two pockets. I think the one you have for that will.
Would anyone like to change the motion? Would anyone like to make a second?
Which article?
Um Article seven. Well, what is now Article seven? We might change the numbers. So. We've motioned, we've motioned a second. All those in favor for the stabilization and other special funds article. All those in favor, please vote aye. I know Capital had a lengthy meeting on Wednesday. Is there anything out the door for that that advisory has also voted on?
They're gonna, I'm just gonna get that tomorrow night. So you'll be able to take that Thursday or Monday.
Okay, uh and I think this is gonna be relating to the citizens petition, but Michelle, can you give us an update on the roof and the town hall repairs? So during Capital, we presented the roof and the design money for sprinklers. Um in through the discussions, because we only have that two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars of memory serves correctly, not to hit the thirty percent. They were not in favor of the roof at the time or any other projects until we could really understand the full and fair cash value. Of the property. And the way we understand it as of today is the full and fair cash value of the property is either the assessed value. Or the appraised value. Um we have not had an appraisal done on the property. Those are the two trigger points that we're hearing now. Um we do have a call in to the Inspector General's office. To find out, because there's a lot of confusion, because the state uses replacement value for their buildings. That doesn't necessarily translate to municipal buildings. It's it's different. Um so we have a call into the Inspector General to see if we can use replacement value for the building. Um therefore, upping the value of the building, being allowed to do more projects without hitting that thirty percent. Um there was some concerns that if we, if we start with the roof and the design work. And we don't know the future of the accessibility challenges with the building. That we may be spending money that we shouldn't until we understand the full scope. I think that was more of the argument for holding on. So I watched Capital too, and there was a suggestion by Mr. Domacser um to do initial studies. On engineering as in design, studies as to the ADA requirements, the um. The ADA requirements and requirements for a variety of other. Items. So we could actually go to bid with that later on with those study results. Is that something that we think we can do? And if so, how much do we give? So without going to a professional, we have a bold proposal from last fall. That suggests that we can have this done, which would include a renovation as well of just the annex. And their proposal price at that time was seventy-nine thousand dollars. I'm not sure if that has changed. We haven't revisited that. Um but it's something that we can revisit in a pretty short order if the board desires. Um is the board interested in moving forward with, and I have the list here, it would be money um as it relates to. A study including engineering work for ADA accessibility requirements for sprinkler. Design, fire alarm and roof.
How many studies have we done? This is just the project fill-in form. And what's come of those studies?
So each study, I think, hasn't targeted exactly what we're looking for today. So it seems like a majority of the studies that have been done have been focusing on tearing down the annex and rebuilding it. Therefore, we don't have the renovation and the accessibility, because if they're gonna rip the building down, it's one of the restations. So. Unfortunately, we just don't have that targeted study.
Didn't we do that before? You got a price on the eighteen million dollar.
We didn't go forward with the study. We took all bid prices and we pobbled together what the renovation. How do people feel about moving forward with any of these study and engineering dots, which it sounds like maybe might be less than a hundred?
I feel a little reluctant to continue studying and throwing money at analysis when we don't have a more comprehensive plan. Which uh and I don't necessarily agree with not doing the roof. I'm in favor of doing the roof. But I I am supportive of the idea that studying something when we don't know what the end point should be is a waste of money.
I would agree. And I and I would say a roof is fundamental for any dealing with any property. What I want to find out is the question of the appraisal. The appraisal, if we can use replacement value. A lot of our problems become a lot easier to deal with, because then we can spend the money that it might take. If they were to do assessed value, that's a very, especially a municipal building, and very difficult. It's almost an art. You can almost. Pick a, pick a number and you can justify it. Replacement is probably pretty easy and it's probably the most accurate for a specialized building. I would like to find that figure out and then we can build using that figure as to what we can do going forward.
You can vote to have a full appraisal done of the building. Um we did get a proposal for that. It was four thousand dollars to have an appraisal done in the building. But I think until we find out what full and fair cash value actually means from the Inspector General. We don't even go forward with that because it may not.
If we can use replacement value, we're way ahead of the game.
Replacement values. Helen, what do you think?
What do I think? I think Capital had had another interesting point the other night. Um they requested what. It would take, what Mr. Howland would, how do I say this? What are his priorities to keep? Not only the the occupancy going for six months at a time, but like what is the complete list? Do we have it?
Uh, John How is the town's building inspectors, not the town's builder, right? So it's not in his bailiwick to tell us what the building needs to look like. He assesses what it is, and it's our obligation to come to it. So we're asking to have a town, that question makes him almost the town building committee, and I don't think it's fair or reasonable to ask him to do that. Uh, what, what, what we, what he, we have asked him, what he says is, look, we can, we've, we've actually made the building safety compliant for the moment with the fire doors. And by moving people out of the historic structure. So almost moving down a path towards, you know, getting the building into compliance. Again, those things are, we know the sprinkling system for sure, and we know that there's, um, um.
So what are the other things that he inspects then?
So what I mean is, so the, the, the. One, one of the challenges, we've discovered every time you turn something over, something else pops out. Like ADA, if that's something he's assessed, because he hasn't had to. So I mean, you know, it's, it's like a, I, I have to call this, it's like a Pandora's Town Hall. Right? Every time, that's the reason this has never been addressed peacefully, because it becomes Pandora's Town Hall. And, and, and so what we're trying to do is kind of buy time. That's what we're trying to do, and right now we're doing it in a safe way. Um, and that said, the long-term answer is something that we're trying to get a little room to figure out.
Well, could we, could we at least do an ADA co-compliance study, figure out from an independent third party? What do we have to do if, if we decide to do anything, let's say in November? Can we, like, what would that trigger if we did a fire alarm design and the fire suppression? Or if we did the roof, or let's say if we did all of it, like? What, what's the downstream dominoes of that with ADA and co-compliance? And then at least we have a fit, like, we have the things we need to do and then price that out. Yes.
I'm gonna kind of jump around. I'm like this, what would we need? At the very least, just to finally get the ball rolling after twenty or forty years. So what we need, what we need. So say we said we want to move. Uh, windows. What do we have to have done? Pay for work or inspection. To get the ball rolling at Town Hall.
I think one of the challenges, Paul, some of you raised before, and both of you, is that what's the point? Where are we going? What are we doing?
Exactly.
Right? So the problem is, the minute you start trying to segregate these things, it sets up different fields of dominoes. Like, for example, the, the, and, and I only know this because I've heard it a thousand times, I'm not saying this is a, but it's true. The corridor on the second lane, it's not, it's not wired. Now, what would it take to make that wired? I've heard various options, but, you know, with that, it, it does, it's not compliant. Again, it was built a hundred years ago. Nobody thought about this. How do you make it compliant? And again, so one of the proposals is to do nothing else, right? So wouldn't it, that would never have been an issue. Uh, we have bathrooms in front of the building that are downstairs. That, that are, that are, that's, they're not, I mean, I used. But when I can, because they, they actually function. But they're old and they, they don't mean, you can't get to them, so you don't have to have a lift to get to them. So I, I don't even want to. So that's part of the problem is what is the, what's the question? And I understand exactly where you're coming from, Gene, and we've talked the same things. It's, the problem is that how you ask the question becomes very different depending on who's asking the question, right? One of the things that I think is getting a little frustrating, we feel like we're going in circles trying to get answers, because the questions keep changing. And it's not, and we try to do our job, so we're trying to get the answer. I, the roof is something, by the way, and it's not gonna trigger any of these things, except the issue of the, the increased value, which we're gonna work very hard to make sure it gets done. That has to get, right, the roof is fundamental. You gotta keep the water out, right, and the elements and the birds and the gossips. And then you go off that, um.
Why are we deviating away from the roof again?
Because we can't. If in fact the bid comes in any higher than two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, including the design, then we try to go thirty percent. So I think that was the concern, and I don't want to put words in my members here, but I think that was the concern. That if we do this and we bid it and we trigger it, then what's, I think that was really where they were coming from.
So, so, and again, that, that is some.
Capital, correct. Yes, I'm speaking of how the capital, yeah, you're speaking of the capital discussion that. Um.
Michelle's, uh, is, is, is already reached out, and we're trying to get answers as to what these triggers are and what, how can we reassess the building again?
And I'm aware we could go try to seek a variance from that requirement, but whether it gets granted or not is up to the state. Um, that's another step that is not a guarantee. It sounds, I've talked to Mr. Brewer, I've met with him, I, he made, you know, helpful suggestions, and that's one of his helpful suggestions. So, so we know that, it's just, you know, when we go to town meeting, we usually like to have our ducks in a row on these issues, not just. Put money out there, which we may or may not be able to spend, particularly with the capital stabilization fund being super tight right now. Well, I guess my only concern for the board would be, let's say you find a path that you want to pursue. In the summer at some point, for whatever reason, um, maybe it's you stay in Town Hall, or maybe it's. You find another place to relocate and you want to work with these nonprofits on pursuing something, but you want to do some minimal co-compliance. Unless we have money set aside to begin some of that study and design process, you're gonna be in literally the same point we are in November right now. Not having the ability to get bid documents or more precise cost to figure out. What your options are, like, it's painful, but we continue to have to buy. The engineering and the design study to even figure out the cost of the options. That, I think it's a little bit of chicken and egg and, um.
Because entirely of my sister.
Well, but the studies are, the design studies are required by state law, from what I understand, right?
No, 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 I'm talking about the past iterations. How many times have we read the state book?
Yeah, no, I know.
Due to unforeseen circumstances.
I'm just suggesting, if the board wants to figure out what are the real options are on the cost. It would probably be prudent to put some money aside right now to do some of this foundation.
Gene, I would argue that the, the pace that this issue seems to have progressed, we're. Uh, I'm still in favor of doing the roof, because I think that buys us time. And then I would argue that we're at least a year from having clear direction to even give to an engineering firm or an architecture firm. About what we would be asking them to do, and I think that's work that's primarily, um, input from folks here in town, input from select board, input from Town Hall staff. So I, I'm less concerned about setting aside the money now, because I think if we get the roof on, we buy ourselves some more time. To put together a comprehensive plan, and then we hope and pray that that's the plan that sticks.
I suppose the plan you could adopt is, okay, we're gonna set aside money for the roof, but if it triggers the. If, if, when we land on, let's say, the appraisal or replacement value in the summer and it comes in not what we hope or want, then we're not gonna trigger the, we're not gonna do it.
Can you perhaps go a little?
Yeah.
I think, again, I'm gonna keep going backwards. As long as staff is saving that building for time being, we've got to address things like. Five for variance, we've got to get something solid on that building. At the very least, these guys that are working in it every day, unfortunately, are. They depend, Europe, and they're not getting ready, and it's, it's seeming like they're collapsing on their heads. Things like that, so I think the fastest way to get to putting at least something solid, so at least we're tightening up part of the building. The R four, Rudy's staff. You know, you'd apply for a variance, which we would probably get granted, I would think, um, especially some of us. But in the interim period of time, I would get the appraisal. You know, at least so we have those in a row, we know what the replacement cost. This is just things, um, but. I'm fully in support of putting a roof on the building, not kicking the can down the road anymore. I just find every time we open the Town Hall can. We come up with problem after problem after problem. We get one solution. It'll. So we start from there, just Town Halls aren't going anywhere. We know that. It's too much attention in the ranks for Town Halls, it's big. It just is. And till we come up with something that's agreeable to most of the town. And maybe some step aside at some point in time. Reason for the rock, um. But I think that we should really concentrate on that, I was definitely in the near future time for getting, finding the best path.
Yeah.
At least that, I mean, me personally, I liked windows, things like that, just get the ball rolling, like, um. Again, this is.
Yeah, I don't think that there's any question that once you, once a structure loses the integrity of the roof, the rest of the structure goes very, very quickly. So that, at least we know that's the one, one priority we need to figure out how to do. And I think when we get a feeling for what we can expect on the value, that will give us a broad outline of the budget that we'll. We'll have to, uh, spend for that and the. Various other things that can go along, so at least we'll have a building to preserve.
Helen, thank you.
Um, I agree that the roof has, has to get done, and I think we need the appraisal, and I would spend four thousand dollars to get the appraisal, I mean, the land value alone. For those of us whose assessments have gone up sixty, seventy percent on land, I would think based on that neighborhood and, and what the acres are going for. You know, it could give us a room in that thirty percent threshold. But no.
So it's only based on the building?
It's only based on the building, not the land.
Okay.
Yeah. Can I have that too?
Right, please.
As long as it's owned by the government, you can't do anything else with it. You can't project building houses on it, because you can't. If it's owned by the government, you can't do those things. Well, you can't sell it, but that changes.
Well, the, the, the.
And like, I'm trying to just.
The building is a separate deal.
Yeah, okay, so I think, I, I think four thousand dollars is short money to do that and, and to get some peace of mind. That putting a roof on is not going to push us over, you know, this thirty percent threshold. And we can calm a lot of nerves by, by doing that. And, um, I think, I think the roof is, is very important to get it done. And I agree with Mr. Plax, I think it's gonna be about a year before we really can come to a comprehensive decision. All of us in the community of what we want to do with Forty-One Highland to have. And people have to pony up and say, how much am I willing to spend? I'm gonna keep going back to that. How much am I willing to spend more on my taxes every year? For this? And maybe that's how we have to work backwards. Because it voted down every other number.
I also think that to the extent that the nonprofit can put together a meaningful, um, suggestion to take the historic Town Hall. And hive it off. That will solve a lot of problems. Whether they could do that or not is something that, um, we don't know, but we'll just let Michelle take care of it.
Well, we add Michelle's answer if it's from the nonprofit, so. Okay, so it sounds like, is, is the board generally in favor of moving forward with the roof?
Roof and appraisal.
With the footnote on. If for some reason the roof triggers over thirty percent.
According to the parents.
Yeah, I mean, we'll do everything we can, variance, you know, we'll figure, we'll try to figure it out, try to make it happen. But if for some reason we can't, let's say they reject the variance for whatever reason, um. We're not gonna trigger the thirty percent requirement, because we don't have the funding for that. And it may be fine, and maybe, you know, let's say ten thousand dollars or, I don't, I have no idea, until we actually get a study, we don't know. Right? So you don't want to do the ADA study, doesn't sound like accessibility study? No?
I'm hopeful that, uh.
Okay. All right, um.
Madam Chair, I want to order a request to take up Article twenty-five as long as this discussion has begun. And answers are for our company from the audience.
Mr. Dick, I, I appreciate the efficiency. Right now, we're still working through what the select board's capital item is gonna be before we get to the citizens petition. That's, that's where we are right now. Trying to figure out what warrant are we gonna put on next. So is the select board inclined towards the? The roof?
Yes, yes. With, with you.
Okay, with, all right. I think the next thing that we have to focus on is where's the money gonna come from? Because the capital stabilization money right now. Is there money for the roof in the fund?
As long as we, uh, when we close out, and I validate this with our all the. Form five, the structure we retain plus our current account. It'll be a hundred thousand dollars roughly, when we close out all the old Town Hall bands that existed from prior projects. I mean, stolen, so that, that hundred thousand can be repurposed towards this building. Um, plus, remember, you also set aside half a million dollars in hospital.
So it's not fair.
And I, it's not, it's not. It, you, it's not dedicated to that, it's fungible, but you can, well, certainly. It was in the warrant last year, you could totally put it in there with the anticipation of potentially pulling it back out for Town Hall purposes. So you have six hundred thousand dollars that is available at the moment. Uh, if you want to use all, and I'm not saying we need to use all. So, well, certainly we have enough to do the roof and stuff.
And the appraisal.
And so led in an extra hundred, but I know Capitol was worried about dipping below a million. So that's why I just wanted to kick the tires.
Yes, a hundred, plus two hundred, that should go us that, that's three hundred, that's three hundred thousand dollars.
That's two, we have a budget number, two eighty-five, I don't know if it's gonna be enough. Until we go after bad segments.
And forty-five thousand for the fire suppression system design.
We can't.
We can't do that.
We can't do that because it triggers for thirty percent.
But we don't know that yet, so. We, we could.
Design.
Just, just the design.
I just have a question. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna put money forth for the design without a plan to do the project? I think this is kind of chicken and egg again.
Right, we just talked about it last week, that's why I'm.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, is it a little chicken and egg again that we're?
Because we don't know what's gonna actually happen with the building.
With the building, like, if the nonprofits take it over, are we still gonna be responsible for, is that? Well, does the design get us the ability to get a real bid, like a true cost? And so.
And, and just having the design and therefore the ability to bid, give us forward progress on their certificate of inspection? For another six months.
I think clearly, yes, I think given the roof name, because it's.
Any forward.
Any forward. We stick.
All right, so is the board content with moving the roof forward?
Yes.
Subject to the contingency we just said, okay. Um, so we'll move back to Capitol. And advisory. Same move. Um, we appreciate the value issues. We're gonna request the money and then work on the value simultaneously, with the hope of locking that down in the interim. Anything else on this? No, okay.
I'm sorry, just a clarification, so we have a, I think, I don't want to press up.
Don't you want to? You can't, I mean, the Inspector General will tell us what.
Right, right, but, so.
Um, why don't we move now to the citizens petition that deals with the related matter? If you don't mind, Michelle.
Good. Uh, Pete Longley, obviously, right? Um, thank you for inviting me. Uh, I, if, if I may, I just want to, uh, comment on, um, the previous discussion with respect to the. You know, the project. So it's, it's actually the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board that's the trigger, it's not ADA. ADA is federal, um, anti-discriminatory legislation. So it's a M A A B, which is a code that's, that's designed to encourage owners of public property to make improvements. To, uh, make buildings more accessible to people. If they're afraid to do something else and it costs too much. They would like you to also make improvements to the building. Now, uh, I've done a rough survey of the building. Uh, ADA record, uh, uh, M A A B requires you have parking, uh, accessible parking, we have that. We have, it requires you have a curb cut, we have that, it requires access. a curb cut. We have that. It requires access to the front door. We have that. It requires accessible routes within the building. We have that. It requires that you have uh, accessible restrooms. We have that. Uh, glancing around the plans, again, their plans are not actual filled dimensions. Uh, there, there, it appears there's a half a dozen doors that might have to be moved and perhaps some hardware upgrades. And uh, M A A B appeals for it, has an excellent record of forgiveness of what, when, when it comes to historic buildings. So a lot of the problems that we have that would inhibit accessibility are within the historic building. And there are portions of the building, uh, in particular, the front above the, above the, uh, the old entrance accessed by flight of stairs. Arguably, that area would not have to be accessed by public. And uh, M A A B appeals for it would probably not require you to make any improvements in that area. Similarly, uh, age is apparently a problem. They would probably allow the, the installation of a lift. So there's a number of uh, alternative compliance measures that you would be able to accomplish. And you could do your roof for two hundred and eighty-five thousand and spend probably less than a hundred thousand dollars. And at the same time, the select board would be communicating a message to the public that we care about improving accessibility to our citizens. So uh, we hear a great cloud of fear about, oh, we have to bring this whole thing up, up, up to code. The only way you're really going to know is to, is to go out and hire a professional. Have them come in with uh, uh, with the uh, a yardstick, a measuring tool, and go around and measure things because uh, M A A B or five twenty-one CMR is all about dimensions. So if you comply with the dimensions, you comply. And I think you're going to find that most of the building does comply. There will be limited areas that don't. And it's not this million dollar problem that, that, that I think, it sounds like everybody's imagining to fix it. So anyway, that was what I thought I would add.
Mr. Longley, as to your petition, is there anything you would like to add or recommend to the board? And I'm going to try to cut to the chase. Are you going to continue forward with your petition?
Uh, I, I plan to, to continue, but uh, I, I have to say, I'm really looking forward to meeting with you, uh, Paul and you, Ellen, uh, tomorrow to, to talk about uh, how can we collaborate? So that, that all the interested parties can accomplish what it is that we'd like to accomplish. I think we can. The citizen petition's going, going to remain there. But uh, it's something that could easily be rescinded on the town floor depending upon what sort of a direction we're moving in. I, I really want to, I really want to find, find a solution for the town hall, which by the way, is that tiny little building on the top of our logo. But I'd like to find a way to preserve it. And um, it, it needs, it needs some tender loving care. And uh, I, I don't think that the, that is, that the citizens would be opposed to paying money to fix the town hall that, that has not had a new roof button on it for a little too long and some other things that would make it a better building. I, I, I happen to believe that the, that the, that the citizens are in favor of that. And I would much rather it be that um, the citizen's petition and the select board and the, the uh, community group that, that all have an interest in, in our town hall, that we all come together um, positively before the public to present something that, uh, that we're all in favor of. And then we all think is a, is a affordable, since I'm paying for it. You guys are all paying for it. The, the voters will all be asked to pay for it. Uh, we, we, we'd like to see that our money is being well spent.
Thank you, Mr. Longley. Does the board have any questions? So, Mr. Longley, right now, the board is in the position of determining what recommendation we want to provide to town meeting because you'll be moving forward with your petition. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Longley?
I know we'll meet tomorrow, so no.
I thought that was very um, positive. The, I've listened to your, your comments um, and have seen a certain amount of appreciation of the reality of dealing with older buildings. Um, and, and understanding that that does require sometimes a little creative. And I welcome, you know, your meeting with the, uh, select board members tomorrow. Um, because the reality is, as we all know, the town will not spend a large amount of money. They want to keep the old town hall. And that's pretty, pretty clear. It's not easy to do. But I think we all have to work together. And I'm very much in favor of that. Um, I do believe that the citizen's petition, as it is written, is a um, it's a wake-up call to everybody in town that we have to address it. And I don't think it's the solution. It suffers from rigidity. Um, I don't think it's workable as it's written. However, the um, thoughts behind it and the work behind it and the ideas behind it, I think, need to be incorporated in that in a cooperative way with the town. And that goes for all members of the community. We need to, at this point, you know, work together and uh, drop our, some of our historic whatever. But I, I welcome that spirit of cooperation and uh, I think that there's a recognition that the select board has been working very hard to deal with all of these things. So, thank you.
Two questions that I'd ask you to speak to. The first is, um, if, if you could speak to your level of confidence and uh, what documentation, if any, you have a backup, those four projects that you have listed coming in under a million dollars. Uh, and my second question is, uh, as we talked to you earlier tonight, there's a question of are we uh, applying Band-Aids to something that is going to require more major surgery in another few years, therefore the Band-Aids would be wasted? Apologize for the terrible metaphor, but, and if you could speak to those two things.
Yeah, um, I, I, I can only guess when you consider that there was a vote two thousand eight to do the grand redo of town hall that failed. There was a group, uh, a vote in two thousand fourteen to tear off the annex and rebuild it. And then redo the historic section. That failed. Two thousand eighteen, same thing failed. Two thousand twenty-one, same thing failed. During all those in between, I think there was sort of an attitude of we don't need to fix it because we're going to tear it off and get rid of it. And as a result, it's not gotten any better. So if the citizens don't want to move, don't want to, don't want to leave our, our historic building, which is part of the town logo, then we, we, as citizens, we have to suck it up and we have to pay for it. Uh, because it's, because the, the monies that could have been spent in the last fifteen years weren't spent. Um, because there were grander plans that didn't get enough votes. And um, maybe we need to try fixing it up and um, and making it a better place so that we don't have as many problems there.
Uh, and the other part of the question was your level of confidence that the four repairs that you have listed in the article would come in under a million dollars?
Yeah, so the, the, the plan has all along been driven by, by the amount of money as a limit. As opposed to, let's do these four projects. Let's, let's hire an engineer, an architect, whatever. Let's go out and design a bunch of things and then the price comes in and it's too much. We certainly could do that. Go out, hire engineer, prepare a bunch of plans and whatnot, but it would have to be done in a way where you've got a base contract amount. And for the HVAC, I'll use that, I'll use, uh, this as an example. We have to replace the chiller. There's no air conditioning in the nineteen eighty-seven annex. So replace the chiller. That could be as far as, as we go because we've run out of money repairing the roof. And we've run out of money putting in the sprinklers. So we've got flexibility. We've got more flexibility. We can do more HVAC work. Possibly put in some more efficient units than the through wall units that we have in the historic section. And right now, it's, there's actually no air conditioning on, on, in the auditorium. Uh, I can stand corrected. Anyway, I, so having, having flexible scope by having a base bid, base bid is we're going to do the chiller and then we'll have alternates to do other things. And if the prices come in and, and then we can afford one of those things, we'll put them into the shopping cart. Otherwise, you know, uh, we have to come back next year and try, and, and uh, try to, try to buy those things next year. When, when the coppers have been refilled. Thank you.
I have a question about those coppers. Um, what's the funding source? I know addition reasons borrow or raise or appropriate from funds, but what funds? Is this a tax increase thing? Is being proposed to town meeting, capital stabilization, free cash, operating budget? What?
Uh, well, I certainly would think that the voters would prefer to not have a tax increase, that they would hope that there's enough money amongst uh, everything else to finally do to town hall what, what's needed to be done for quite some time. Uh, I mean.
So this is critical to me. Um, as someone on the long-term finance committee looking at all the balances and numbers, so does, do you and the other citizen petitioners have a proposal from where these funds would come from?
Do the citizens vote on, on line items on a budget?
The, there's nothing in, are you asking you as the citizen petitioner, can you vote on something?
Well, I'm asking as a, as a matter of, of um.
Are you suggesting come out of the operating budget?
So, I, I mean, I, it, as a procedural question, um, how is the budget determined?
Well, so it.
It's not voted on by the, by the public. We, we, we're not, we're not, are we presented with specific line items?
Every year, every year at town meeting.
Okay.
We vote on the operating budget. We vote on capital items. We vote on items that come out of free cash and other allocation like retained items out of the enterprise fund. So the, and each.
Yeah.
Each has to have an appropriation. Each has to have an identified source. So the question is, where are you asking the residents to fund this through, if not a tax?
So I assume that the citizens are not part of developing the line items. They're just asked to vote on. Is that right?
The citizens are very much, it, it's a citizen-run government. Um, so the citizens, through all the committees, we bet the operating budget.
But it's, it's the committees that, that, that put together the, the line items, right? I mean, it's not as though we have three thousand people sitting in a room and we move budget numbers around.
The select board proposes the warned articles. We will go back and forth, including with the committees and town staff about where the money should come from. Should come from free cash, from capital stabilization. We work very carefully to balance our budgets, including for auditors. If you want to bond it, we'll have to go to, you know, the market for that. And there's applicable requirements there. Typically, the market doesn't want to bond a thirty thousand dollar item.
Right.
Um, so this, the devil is in the details with the money. And so I guess you just heard, we were trying to finish off the discussion with the capital item for the roof to figure out where exactly are we going to get the money for. Um, and so my question is, is there a proposal that the citizen petitioners have as to where this million dollars this year and subsequent ones, because you're talking about refilling copper. You may or may not know, but our capital stabilization from the entire town, including all of our schools and everything, is two million um, a year. And we're trying to increase it. So this would be half of the fund if that's where you're proposing the money from. And so I'm trying to figure out what, what's the proposal? And, and I, I want to hear from the citizen's petitioners. I see you, Mr. Dick, unless you are representing the citizen's petitioners that I would like to understand from the petitioners. Are, are you one of the petitioners?
I'm not, but I, I, I just wanted to offer um, this thought from capital budget committee perspective, if.
Um, are you representing capital budget in terms of being authorized to speak on their behalf on this?
No, I'm not.
Okay, okay. And I, I don't want to be rude, but I know capital watches our meetings, so I want to be careful about who's speaking on whose behalf. Um, where this is a citizen's petition, I would like to understand where is the money coming from? Because the residents are.
It's coming from me and everyone else who pays his taxes. Uh, we all, we, we all, we would like to see um, some of the, the taxes that I pay quarterly channeled to pay for the, the repair and upkeep of our town hall.
There's something you'd like to cut in order to do it out of this current warrant? We've been discussing the operating budget. We have a variety of capital items. The money has been allocated and there's not an extra.
So I, I'm, I'm, I'm not in a position to recommend cutting anything. I, all, all, all I'm saying is that we have a town hall that needs to be maintained. There's going to be a cost associated with it. We have a, we have a government that's in charge of budgets and committees. And um, the citizens would, rather than spend money moving to another location, which you would have asked us to pay for, we would like money to be spent to, to repair and um, restore our town hall so that it's a, a useful, good public building along with the other twenty-some odd buildings that we have.
That means what we're looking at the last. So you are looking at for a tax increase. That's all. That's.
If I was faced with, if I was faced with, with a modest tax increase, and I believe that this, this would be a trigger of modest tax increase. If I was faced with a modest tax increase and, and my vote was vote yes for a modest tax increase and town hall will be fixed or vote no and town hall will not be fixed, I suppose I would probably vote yes.
All right, that's, I think that's what the chair was looking for, to see where we're looking at a source of money.
I'm, I am not sitting here proposing a, a tax increase. I, I am saying that I paid plenty of money. And some of that plenty of money ought to be, to be used to fix a town building.
But you are welcome to the chair to show you through the budget. We can see what funds go, where they're allocated. You can see if you come up, and I think what we're leaning towards is kind of what is the petition's solution? Where do we find the money? So, and I know you're hesitant about the.
So if we don't find, if we don't find this.
And um, so understandably, you're concerned with tax increases. But if you go through the budget, where your petitioners go through the budget, if you can tell this board or capital or advisory, where you can cut to come up with the money. It's fixed on hall. It's been, it's been.
You really want me to find some enemies, so.
No, I do not, absolutely not. But it's a petition, so I just think that in presenting it to the citizens, you know, that we really, we should have our ducks in a row. Working together, fine. I think that, that's fantastic, but you know, it's, it's inherent on you guys to be looking at that, where are we going to get the funding? You know, or are we suggesting a year to year to year tax increases? Your proposal, if I'm reading correctly, it goes on over a number of years. So every year, we're going to be seeking that funding. And as you said, what's concerned me is we get to the roof and then we start the air conditioning, but we only have money for a chiller. All right, so the building sits in limbo for that period of time till the next funding source is drawn from. And again, I'm going to bounce over to the human element, which I want to do, is the people working in that building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've heard nothing about when we're doing this reconstruction. No one said it. I haven't had a clear answer. Where are these guys going to work? I mean, I, I, I mentioned it. Are they going to be, you know, ducked? Watch out, watch out with a blade. Uh, where, what do you do with them? Again, so I'm leaning towards the funding and also the people working in that envelope.
So for the three items that we have, there's four of them. There's, there's a brick walk in front. But the other three items that we have, uh, the roof goes on in a few days. Uh, and that's just the way roofers do it. Uh, there will be some uh, banging noise while it's happening, but that happens all the time. The chiller is, uh, a guy shows up with a lift in the, in the parking lot and he pulls the old one off the pad and puts a new one on. So that doesn't affect anybody inside the building. And the sprinklers are in a part of the building that's partially condemned, so no one's in there.
No, they're in the annex. That's where we're running some typical these with historical.
The sprinklers are, are being installed in the, in the historic wing, which right now is unoccupied.
So again, I'm talking about displacement. Again, but I'm, we're not going there right now. That's a subject for another day. But I was getting about the money. So that's where I think.
So the idea of the citizen's petition began when we were faced with uh, ten, anywhere from ten to eighteen million dollars. The idea of the citizens petition began when we were faced with, uh, ten, anywhere from ten to eighteen million dollar. Um, one Pleasant Street option. Ten million for one Pleasant Street and, uh. Eight million estimate to do something with, with town hall. So that was an eighteen million dollar plan. We came up with what we thought was a three million dollar plan. If you're gonna ask the citizens to pay for an eighteen million dollar plan, I think they would rather fund, rather fund and pay for three million dollars.
Someone? Um, of course. Right, if it's an apple and an apple, right, of course you'd rather pay three million, he's just moaning about my real estate taxes, so. A- absolutely, I, I think, um, so my, my thoughts on, on this are, one. I don't much care for hyperbole, so when we say everyone in town wants to stay on forty-one Highland Ave, I don't think that to be the case. I, I think it's a bit, we're, we're in a. But a divided community in terms of people who really wanna stay and people who don't really care. Okay, and they don't care where they get their services because they don't have. The, the romantical attachment to forty-one Highland Ave. So let's not say everyone in town wants to stay here, to, to everybody who, who thinks that, um. So. And I also think, and I said it before, so I hope my colleagues forgive me. While we can fix a roof and a chiller and put in a, 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 a fire suppression system. We really, as part of our plan, should think about how goods and services should be delivered. In the municipal environment in ten years, in fifteen years, in twenty years. Okay, talking to a few young parents in my neighborhood, okay, and elsewhere. They don't want going, they wanna do everything on the computer, right? And there are still people who wanna walk in, so we have to think about that, have to think about what kind of space that means we need. Going forward, not just for next year, but for the long term, because. I'm not gonna be here in ten years. I don't know if anyone else is gonna be on the select board in ten years, I don't know if anyone in this room will be here in ten years, but we have to have a plan. So that in ten years or fifteen years, we have. A modern, technologically savvy, for lack of a better expression, building for the future municipal services in the town. And, um, and finally. If only we could get everything done for three million dollars, um, I, I think, I think it's, uh, to use a previous expression, a Pandora's box. I have concerns about the public procurement element. Um, that has not been best, you know, investigated with your, your proposal, um. And I also have a concern about, okay, we're gonna spend three million. And if we get halfway through something and the money has run out, we're done, or if we open up the wall to do something. But the money has run out, we can't fix the wall, so I think we need to think through that a little bit better about the things. That can be done, um. Within, uh, within a reasonable budget, because. The building is old, we don't know what's behind the walls. And, um, we all know from owning homes, you open up a wall, you don't know what's there, so. I would just say we have to put that into the equations. Miss Frank.
Um, thank you. I think you have some good ideas. But what you're seeing here is the reality of actually having to implement ideas and the other things that. That play into it, have done. This causes this, where's the money coming from? All of these issues. Your idea is a conceptual idea. And to be, um, commended for stepping to the plate and coming up and. You know, putting yourself through all this stuff, we do it all the time. It is very complicated. But one of the things that helps you get through complicated. Um, things is a clear idea of where you want to go. And part of the public process is letting people speak. And things come up, and so you get a consensus of the. If you're, of, of the consensus. Or some consensus of where we want to go. And I think that we are much further along, I think, uh. People who have been on the outside are now hearing us try to deal with these things, where are we gonna get the money? What is it if that appraisal comes in, you know, differently? Um, and the. Concepts in the citizens' petition, I, I think need to be celebrated, but it's a petition. To say, hey, listen, this, let's take a look at it this way. Not gonna be have, actually going to do it, but it's a very valuable way to take a look at it. And I think what I'm seeing is kind of a convergence of, of values between most of the community, there's always the outliers. Um, and, and again, I welcome you. Coming forward in a positive way to see what we're trying to do and not in an antagonistic way. Because I think we're gonna have to solve it, and I do think although it doesn't feel like it now. I think the town is gradually moving towards, you know, some kind of understanding of how we need to go move, move forward. It seems to me it's going to be gradual and step by step of making sure your, our, our steps that we. That we take are well thought out and we remain on solid ground such as it is. By two cents, or three cents.
Chris. Absent clarity from the applicant on exactly where the money would come from, do we need to make an assumption which might trigger putting something on the ballot? If this ends up being a tax increase for which we borrow? Do you think the procedural?
It's an unfunded, it's like a sensitive town meeting, it's unfunded. There's no money being allocated, this is why I'm asking, because it's like nothing. At the end of the day, without a funding source, unfortunately. Um, we had that situation at the last town meeting with a petition for the feasibility study that had no funding source, and so. It could get voted through, but it would never happen because there was no money allocated to actually pay for it, and so. It really leaves full discretion, I think, with the select board to decide, what do we do? Do we put on a, you know, town hall capital stabilization fund and we. You guys put it on the ballot in November and say, okay, full transparency, the town can make an informed decision. Uh, do you wanna pay a million dollars year after year until? We decide enough is enough and. You know, we think it's gonna be up to ten years to do a minimum repair job, based on everything we know, probably longer. And the average amount, your taxes will increase for the median home is gonna be two sixty-five a year. Like, that is, I think, an informed conversation that people can really dig their teeth into and think about. Okay, do I wanna repair solution? This is what it looks like, this is the true cost. Um, I think that's what the board would probably. Wanna do, because there'll be people in the audience like me who will stand up and say exactly that and say, this is the true cause, this is what. You're asking the residents to do, whether. You talk about it or not, and if you try to put it in the budget, you're gonna have to ask it for a tax increase for something else to maintain all the services.
I, I think it's entirely reasonable for the select board. To take a, a, a stewardship approach to town hall, recognizing. Regardless of where town hall is, regard, regardless of which other buildings in town that we're talking about. We need to have funds set aside to repair. And, and make necessary upgrades to the properties that we own, if we don't, they will deteriorate. And then we'll be faced with a bigger financial problem.
We're doing that right now, we're putting a roof on. You know, we're, we're looking at what the costs are and seeing where we can get it, actually find the funding in the budget, so. You know, facts have matters, Peter, we're kinda edging towards doing what you. Do, we just have to recognize we can't put it all, you know, well, you can't put in a petition, petition, but. I wouldn't, I support pretty much where you're going from. But I wouldn't vote for the petition.
I, I, I never wanted to put in a petition. Well, withdraw. I just, I just figured, I just figured. That my select board represents me, would, would hear what I'm saying. And thinking, maybe I have some good ideas, because I wanna help and I care about my town.
I know you do. I've noticed that from, I mean, I do.
I'm sorry, Jack, did I?
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I think you do, so I, I think you genuinely do care, I'd never say any different. I just. You know, I'm looking at the petition right now and. You know, you see this happening with this, we tried to come up with solutions. Alright. It could, could have been presented then, sent to the town, or was that for a vote in a special election that? Then, you know. Would start it to rot again, and, and looking at the petition here. It's, it's. Again, I don't mean to be rude, it's just not well thought out, first phase maybe. But then we're looking at the highest priority improvements that continue to, I think. We don't have a cogent plan for that building. Will, will it be maybe that the town office stay there? So I agree with Ellen in saying that we do have to take ten years down the road.
Right.
I think the more, most key component in, at forty-one Highland Avenue is just the historic portion as it is. Alright, I, but. I think if people took the romanticism out of that and maybe fixed up that old building so you could have your plays and stages, but. I don't see anything in this position about that, I just see that. Then we discuss the priority improvements in the next phase, uh, and then the next phase, we discuss that, we import that. So there's no cogent plan for. You know, so.
We're asking, only, only asking for a one-year vote.
You're asking for one year, then after that, we leave a building somewhat limbo, which it's been in, again, due to. Due to the both being up and down for the last twenty-five, thirty years.
If, if you did the three things that are, that are in the citizens' petition. And you decided to flip the town hall to a, a not, not for profit. They would wanna have the sprinklers, they would wanna have, they, they're not gonna wanna, they're not gonna wanna pay money to remove that annex. When they could just as easily have walls taken out and it can be converted into changing rooms or, 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 or meeting spaces. Uh, it's not a very good use of money to, to rip off. The annex, I mean, you can easily repurpose it for a lot less money than.
Here I go, the annex, it's coming in conversation, I'm just saying.
No, I'm just saying, if you flip it, let's talk about removing the annex and. Which happens to have the elevator in it, by the way. So, um.
So, Mr. Longley, I think what you're hearing is that. The board is moving forward with the roof. And we can, we barely have enough money to just barely cover that. But there isn't additional money. At this cycle right now, from what I see. To do other things unless, other things are cut, unless we say we're not gonna do a heating system for the senior center, so I would. I think, I think what I'm flagging to you, uh, to be transparent, both about what I'm gonna say at town meeting, but also so you know. Unless you're suggesting to cut something else. Or tap into the town's reserve funds, it is not, or to propose a tax increase, it is not clear to me. How you even get any of this other stuff off the ground, we can't afford to pay for it, so I would like to better understand how you think. The town could afford to pay for, 'cause it's not our petition, it's your petition. We are working with, trying to figure out what funds we have, what we can realistically do, given all the government procurement requirements, blah, 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 we've heard all of that. I get that, but this is the place both of us find ourselves in right now, I think we would like to do more. I think if we can do more on town hall, but we're also. Up against. Real requirements, and I think that those who routinely go to town meeting are very familiar with the way the operating budget works, how capital budget. allocations were, I mean. Ha- half of the people in that audience are, have probably been on the town hall building committee and are gonna be very knowledgeable and have a lot of institutional memory. Uh, to the state of that building and the money it's gonna take to actually get this up to speed, and so, um. I, I think that these are practical realities. That are going to play themselves out at town meeting. I also think to Ellen's point. How many people signed your petition? Is it just those listed in the warrant? Or are there additional people beyond this?
I think we had, uh. Thirteen on one petition and seven, on a separate piece of paper.
Um, I think it would be really nice to see that. If there's, for example. Eleven hundred people. That wanna see a long-term capital repair plan over ten to twenty years to fix the town hall. Which is probably what it's gonna take to do it correctly. I think that would be great to see, um, like, for example, the gentleman, Mr. Norman, who came with the three hundred signatures. Because I do think it's important to have an inclusive solution. To town hall, I think that, um. You're gonna have much more success, including over the long term, if the town is actually bought in to what is being suggested here, because. It's only a matter of. Months, if not years, before the need to pay for this, it's the ballot as a tax increase, and so. It's important that the town be bought in, I think, if that's, if that's your real plan to really. Reach out to people beyond your circles, beyond the people you meet with all the time, you know, the same group of people, people that, um. Are maybe, um, you know, in different groups, and I think you've started to do that with the nonprofit folks, that I think represent a very. Large and diverse swath of residents within Cohasset, 'cause there's a ton of people that belong to all of those different groups, so I think they would be a very. Effective sounding board. On that point, um, because they really do have a ton of Cohasset residents in a lot of those places. Who aren't necessarily focused on town hall, but I think they can access them and that information, um. So. I think in terms of the, the petition, I just don't see how it's legally or really more financially. Feasible beyond the roof that the select board has already put on and we've tried to take care. Not to trigger ADA requirement, you know, we've tried to build in some safeguards around that, 'cause I know capital is very concerned about that. If you watch the meeting, um, one of your, the signatories on your citizens' petition is also a member of capital. It sounded like was suggesting not proceeding at all with any repairs, um, so I realize that the select board may be in a, a position of. Pushing capital harder on trying to get some of these repairs done in light of their concerns.
I, I'd be in favor of the repairs, because I think it sends a good message, and I think when you get to the bottom of them. With a, with a real accessibility report, I think it, it's not, it's not the. Um, panic that's suggested by, oh, we have to bring the whole building up to code.
And that, and that, and that might be true, I'm just pointing out that there's gonna be even differing views on the. Select board proposed capital item, as you saw probably from watching capital budget meeting, um. And so even, even that, um, may be a lot of back and forth at town meeting, hard to tell.
They, by the way, once those upgrades are done, they're done.
Hopefully. Until.
For the next project.
Something else happens. Um, so right now we're waiting for capital, it's almost nine, um, we're waiting for capital and advisory to give their final recommendations. Chris, do we think that's gonna happen?
Our, my capital's meeting, um, and. Content is to vote the remainder of the items, but they have not voted, which I think, I think there's six maybe outstanding items.
Um, because it sounds like capital was interested in hearing whether you would withdraw your petition. It sounds like you're not going to, so that's still a live issue for capital and for advisory, um. I know advisory brought up a bunch of really big issues too, including the rework that was likely to occur. And, um, bring up the overall cost, and so, you know, we are all watching those meetings. See, um, what's back and forth this year to try to help inform our discussions and decisions here. Are there any other questions, thoughts? So we'll end up probably taking a vote, just like we did with the other citizens' petition article. Thursday or Monday, depending on what happens with the capital.
Understood. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate all your time.
Thank you.
Time for you to run for office, learn the misery of our lives.
It's a great process.
Okey-dokey. I presume the board wants to wait to hear from capital and advisory of the citizens.
Yes.
Correct, alright. Uh, sorry, I made that assumption, I thought it was a good one. Is there anything else, Chris, I know we sort of skipped warrant articles to.
Six more, as you can vote on if you'd like.
Let's, let's do it.
Article nine I presented last week is one-time costs, there are a package of things that are in there, um. The money for project management. There's some funding for the reserve fund. Uh, money to plug the hole, it's projected for next year's special education costs. Uh, money to come out of some very, you know, sale of grave fund to maintain the cemetery, that's a large amount of money that's built up. Uh, sewer, sewer has been accepted into a program just last week. Uh, sponsored by D E P, so we'll put two twenty-five out, we'll get ninety back, so that'll end up. Uh, only spending one thirty-five, that extra put up all two twenty-five, that'll come out of everything earnings. Um, because that sewer care I mentioned, D- Daryl School, uh, line hasn't been fixed, it won't be done. School's over. And there's a fifty million dollar amount of money that's going from tree, this is paid for tree pines and then to the tree, well, a couple of houses spent.
So question about the sewer repairs at Dare Hill, so we're not able to pay for those?
It's it's not their lines, it's not, it it's it's really school property, it's it's town. It's 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 like a line that connects, it'll it'll be like an internal line connecting your house. It's also, it's quite old, I think, I think it goes back to, it goes back seventy or eighty years, I think, that's one of the reasons. So I advisory voted for these uh package economics.
Are there any questions the board has?
No.
Alright, um. As it relates to recommending article, current article nine allocation of funds for one-time costs at town meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion to do that?
I would make a motion.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote aye. Alright, next up, Chris.
Article ten is just the annual revolving funds, um, that was changed. For my children's school. And by the way, the board can always change the spending amount during the year, and if we had a run on elder affairs programs, it would be slightly. Getting more.
Okay.
Alright, I'd make a motion to a vertical time.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Grady and Mr. Flex, all those in favor, please vote aye. Alright.
Article eleven you'll get on Thursday, because Friday is still on tomorrow. Uh, article twelve, that's just an annual article regarding. Any work ever being done in the board for years.
Would anyone like to move to recommend Town Meeting Article Twelve as it relates to Mass General and Chapter ninety-one, like?
Motion, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Alright, motion is second by Mr. Grady and Mr. Flex. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 One question.
Sorry, article, uh, article thirteen is just an annual renewal of real estate exemptions. For elderly, um, uh. Disabled and. So fiscally. Counted.
Alright, would anyone like to move to recommend?
Um, recommend Article thirteen.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Article fourteen, uh, it expands the amount of money someone can can earn. To qualify to defer their taxes. Uh, it's not fifty-one, the recesses are like the maximum amount of a staple of sixty-nine thousand. That means you put your taxes, they're they're in advance and there's an interest rate that will, so. Every accounting's made whole in the. This just raises the amount of money that someone can have.
What are you, a senior, what age? Sixty-five?
I believe it's sixty-five. And this is, this is all, this is, the only thing we typically do is our old who are property rich and cash poor. And it's either pending a sale or a transfer. Because the interest rate is like, I wanna say it's a penny percent over the war. Pretty high interest rate.
And we don't expect there to be any fiscal effect.
I'm like a motion for a.
I know, I know, if any, it would be better with benefit of the town. Money would easily, boys would. I'll second Mr.
Alright, well. Thank you, Mr. Senior, for your response. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Alright.
The next big check is for Zola person, see if you see me tomorrow.
So we're waiting on the citizens petitions, we're waiting on Capital, right? It looks like there's been a bunch voted up through Capital and we're waiting for Advisory.
So the warrant should be almost locked up tomorrow night, and then again, Thursday, Monday, usually, wild, random. But if I was unlucky to get to Zola. Um, they're not scheduled to hear that until following Wednesday.
So they're not gonna have a recommendation on the warrant?
No, uh, just for, no, let's let's squeeze them in. Uh, we might have to squeeze them out if they vote next Wednesday.
I thought, um, Monday was the drop date.
And it's for you, you lock the warrant, so they can't vote anything that is they are, so. So.
Okay.
The only thing, the only thing we might be able to do there is make up like a tweak. You can't add something new.
So we could add the Advisory and select board votes in then?
We can add votes. Perhaps, that's latest Wednesday. Face is frowning it a lot, um.
No. No, I'm ashamed. So is this our realistic only chance? I mean, we could do it on Thursday and Monday too, but.
And you can vote those articles right through Monday. I just don't think you can get any input from Advisory at all this time.
Good.
Whether you vote up tonight or Tuesday, Thursday, Monday.
Well, let's wait and see what happens and make a decision on Thursday if the board's okay with that.
Agreed.
We need to amend the agenda for Thursday. I added votes. For A T M warrant articles, just be on the safe side. Hey, yeah, it should. Um, okay. Alright, um. Town manager update, but is there anything else?
No, on the warrant, I think we're good. Um, the um. The only thing I'll I'll mention is a lot of things going on this weekend, including the Earth Day, the Earth Day celebration. I just want to address that the school department on the formal ribbon cutting of their new bus, and Paul was there and Jamie was there, I was able to be there. It was a beautiful day, a bunch of kids got to ride around in the white jeep class, it's gotta be a great addition to the fleet. And, uh, sorry, it was a great day.
Thank you. It's there, it's just generic. Yeah. Um, okay. We are moving on, select board. Select Board comments. Mr. Plucks?
Nothing done this evening, thank you.
Mr. Gray?
I would just like to say that I thought we had a very positive thing on the citizens petition. My sense of the citizens are becoming. Uh, a little bit. More understanding of the difficulties of governance, and I think I sensed a positive. Way to move forward with the whole town in solving very difficult Town Hall issues. So. I commend their coming forward and I commend a very, what I thought was a cooperative attitude towards working with the. Selectmen. Nobody in 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 our wonderful town benefits when we fight. We we need to fight, but we don't have to fight quite so hard, quite so often. Thank you.
No, nothing. Great, um, thank you for those who hosted Thursday. Alright, we have no, um, it was a great success. There's no topics not reasonably anticipated. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion in return.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.